... Planning Commission meeting, Upper Province Township.
Hey, how are you?
Thank you all. Thank you all for coming out. Appreciate it very much. I'd like to start with one comment before we get started. And I'd like to thank my fellow board members for electing me chairman again in 2022. Thank you for your support. I appreciate the support from all the other board members. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move to the agenda. I think there's copies of agendas out there and we have them in front of us. And do you want to take a roll call yet or?
No, I think we can see on the agenda.
All right, so the first thing on the agenda then without a roll call would be to take public comments for non-agenda items. So is there anybody here that wants to make a comment on something happening in the township on the non-agenda page?
Prayer for Jennifer Brown.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
A prayer for Jennifer Brown, she was down today.
Okay, that's a great sentiment. Thank you for mentioning that. We all say a prayer for that. So we'll move on to the application tonight, which is the Park House Residential Care Community for Senior Citizens. And with that, I'm going to start with Mr. Mullen.
If I can.
Oh, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting. You don't know. Who's first? Yeah, our supervisor wants to make some comments.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Joe Breslin, I'm the township's attorney. Last night at the supervisors' meeting, there were some people here on Park House, not as many as tonight, but there was a good number of people here. And I made an explanation of the conditional use process that a lot of people approached me and said they found helpful. And a couple of supervisors asked me to make those comments to this group tonight. So for those of you who were here last night, I'm sorry, you got to hear it twice. The, there are two things on the agenda. There's the, there's the plan itself, which is in the first step of the three tentative, tentative preliminary, final. We're at the tentative stage for that. But then there's also the conditional use, which is sort of sits over to the side of the three steps. And it can happen in any sequence, except that you have to have your conditional use approval before you get final approval on the plan. Conditional use, which means you're entitled to the use if you prove you meet the additional criteria in the ordinance, is a piece of litigation. And it begins with the first sworn witness in front of a court stenographer, and it ends with the last witness. And then when the evidence is done being presented, the board has 45 more days after that within which to render a decision for or against. Because it's litigation, the supervisors sit in a capacity that's very rare for them. Ninety-nine percent of the time, elected township supervisors are legislative in nature. And for conditional use hearings, for that one thing, they wear a different hat, which is a judicial hat. So the proceeding that happens here in a conditional use hearing is no different than if it were being, happening in court. They are called a quasi-judicial, quasi-judicial body when they are overseeing a conditional use hearing. Because it is litigation and because they are acting as five judges and not five legislators, one of the most important things is that the applicant be given a fair tribunal and an unbiased tribunal in the presentation of their evidence on the conditional use application. There are published cases that's where a denial of conditional use was reversed by the court because the tribunal was not fair or the evidence, some bias or had a strong stated bias prior to the hearing denied the applicant a fair here. And so in response to many of the people who have stated either fight for us or why aren't you fighting for us or, you know, who do you work for and all those kinds of comments, my answer to you is that the board, the supervisors taking a position prior to hearing the evidence is a reversible mistake that would risk any ruling on the merits. And it would, it would possibly cause a reversal in favor of the applicant. If the board voted to deny, then it could be reversed solely on the basis that it was not a level play to feel going in. And so, and it will be a level play to feel going in. And if the, if the applicant proves everything that has to be proven, then they'll get the approval. And if they don't, they won't. And the board will strictly analyze and scrutinize the testimony to make sure that they have met their burden prior to voting yes. If they haven't met their burden, then the board will vote no. It's, it's just that simple. The supervisors do have the option, and I suspect that they may well exercise that option, of hiring an additional attorney so that I'm representing the board still. And then there's another attorney who can present additional supplemental evidence in addition to whatever evidence is submitted by the applicant. But no matter what anyone, I did state at the last planning commission meeting that when I looked at the criteria in the ordinance and looked at the case out of Worcester Township, superficially, it tells appear to the other consultants and to me that they likely meet the criteria that are in the ordinance. However, they still have to prove that they do. They have to present the evidence to prove that they do. As I said last night, who even knows in the course of presenting their evidence whether some other door opens or something that didn't occur to the township is some other basis or denial. But going into the hearing, which is not yet scheduled by the way, but going into the hearing, the hallmark of it has to be a fair and unbiased forum, which is why you will not or should not, and I don't think will not, hear supervisors state in advance a position on this. It does not mean that they don't understand the issues. It does not mean that they aren't still your neighbors who live in this township, as do I, by the way. It does not mean that they don't understand the significance of the application and of the decision. It simply means that they're following the rules and giving the applicant a full and fair hearing. And so anytime there are, there are a number of emails that have circulated where people have said, I want you to deny this because it does not conform to the ordinance. My reply to you is, we don't know yet if it conforms to the ordinance. That's what the hearing is for. That's what the evidence is about at the hearing. The applicant has no burden to present their whole case in advance of the hearing. And so we don't have that evidence. And so it's impossible to take a position on evidence that you have not heard yet. But the board does understand all of the issues that the public has raised in multiple meetings now and the arguments that have been made. And all of those issues that have been raised will be fully vetted at the hearing. And not only will the township probably have a second attorney working on the case, but anyone who establishes standing, any township resident can also request party status and participate on their own as a party to the litigation if they prove standing. So there's a long way to go, but that long way to go is entirely within the confines of the hearing. The tran, the transcript is, if, when an appeal is taken, that transcript is sent to court and is reviewed by a judge. Most of the time, they don't accept new evidence. They can, that's a whole other thing. But most of the time, they review the transcript, the lawyers argue their position, they read what happened, and they decide whether it was on the up and up or it wasn't. So that record has to be a full and also a clean and also a fair record. That doesn't mean that everyone's not welcome to state their position. Everybody here who wants to say something is going to be entitled to say something just as they were last night and the prior planning commission meeting. So I'm not trying to in any way deter people from making whatever comment or opinions they want to offer about the application, but I thought it was very important for everybody to understand the environment in which we're working with respect to the conditional use hearing. And I do know that several people, I got a couple of phone calls today and I spoke to people after the meeting last night, they, they did not fully understand that. I guess my comments last, at the last planning commission meeting included so many other issues that it maybe got lost in there. So I wanted to reemphasize just what the conditional use hearing process is. There is also the tentative sketch application pending. That is usually a much more routine process with the land development applications. The consultants review them. We have our civil engineer and our traffic engineer here and the land planner and me, and we all review them. And then the applicant indicates whether they can comply with the comments in the review letters. And if they dot all their i's and cross all their t's, they're required to get approval of the sketch plan, but it's still, any approval is ultimately still contingent upon the conditional use approval, which is a formal hearing. The tentative sketch approval is not a formal hearing. Okay, so that is approximately what I said last night. I will, the board members, did you have any initial questions or comments before we finish? Mr. Mullen?
Okay, Mr. Mullen? Well, basically, is this all?
It sounds like it.
Yeah. Basically, as we completed last week's or last month's meeting, as I understood it, we were looking for a resolution or approval and planning commission said, no, we're gonna have a second meeting. And the purpose of that meeting is to allow people who could not be here to attend and also to let people review materials and get more paperwork. We pretty much described what it is that we propose. Remember, we have two things here, tentative and sketch plan, and that's pretty vanilla. I mean, it's either it meets the setbacks and it meets the height and it meets the stormwater. Well, not stormwater, I won't say that. The sketch plan is not required just to meet stormwater. So there was a lot of chatter on that report about stormwater or flooding, and none of that has been looked at yet and doesn't help with the perspective of the tentative plan. So we have review letters and we've indicated that we will address all the comments and all the review letters. So I don't think there's really much argument about the tentative plan. Insofar as the conditional use goes, we did describe generally what we're talking about. As Mr. Breslin said, we're not going to be presenting here our many impact statement and our market study and our traffic report. We're not going to have those things here because they're going to be part of the hearing. That's going to be all the supervisors. So really, we have nothing to add, and I think we have to answer any questions people may have.
Thank you, Ed. And you just mentioned our consultants. I'd just like to turn to that for a minute, just so the public understands that we've reviewed the letters and if they have any comments. I know you said you'll, you'll agree to any of the things that the consultants said. But I'll start with Anthony. He made me a comment on what the traffic plan is at this point.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, so our review letter for the tentative sketch was issued June 24th. You know, as Mr. Mullen said, it sounds like they're, you know, will comply. So, you know, we haven't seen a formal traffic study issued for the study at this point. You know, it's tentative sketch. So we provided basically a, you know, aerial review. We've asked for study intersections and all the, you know, appropriate information and required information for the traffic impact study. And at that point, you know, we need that information before we can get into a detailed traffic analysis and levels, all the typical things we look for.
Dave, you want to?
Yeah, sure. As Mr. Breslin said in his open comments, I mean, this is the first stage of a plan's mission. These plans don't have a lot of details nor they require to. So typically, what we do is we put together a review letter, basically listing all the items that we need in order to complete a more formal review, which, and that is what we've done in our review letter. And once Mr. Mullen and his group put together a revised plan addressing our comments, then we can dig deeper and go into the lead, so to speak, and put together a more formal letter. So that's really what we're asking.
And I would just throw in for people who weren't here before, the tentative sketch plan, and the reason it uses the word sketch is because the plans are not engineered. So that's, it's very conceptual as the first step of the three steps. Then for preliminary approval, the plans are fully engineered, and that's really where the work is. That's really where the consultant's jobs, where they really kick in doing a review of the fully engineered plans. And because the plans are not engineered at tentative, that's why there's not yet any obligation to explain stormwater, for example, because it has not yet been engineered. So that's, I guess with that, we'll go to Jeff. Do you have a list of people who wish to comment or?
Yes, Victoria Schwartz, 2CC and Bachelor Drive was listed first.
Hello, everyone. First, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I am going to just answer, or I should say ask a couple of questions, whether or not they're able to be answered. That's okay at this point in time. A lot of people are passionate, as you can see.
We speak into the microphone, please. We can't hear you back here even with the microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. There is a lot of people here, so I'm sure we all have the same kind of benefit. So I'm just going to kind of throw out some facts, but then also some questions and whether they can be answered. If that'd be fantastic. If it's going to have to come back as we stayed with answers, that'd be great too. The first thing I want to acknowledge is that currently in the Upper Province Township, there is only 5% open space remaining in the entire township. There are lots of other developments that are coming about, but I want to point that out because a lot of people may not know that that's all we have left is 5% open space. Okay? Something like this impacts that 5% of the space. So I'm just throwing that out there as a fact. Second of all, I do have a question, and I know we spoke a little bit about that you making statements about the ordinances and so forth of the, I hope we get this correct, the OSC and also the IAN ordinances. And as Mr. Mullen stated before, that these were not supposed to be private homes, but they were supposed to be under the interpretation of personal care, possibly assisted living, fund establishments, so forth. Under the ordinances that currently exist, you can't have that, at least that's as it states. So my question is, are each individual housing going to have a licensing to operate? Is that personal care or assisted living? Or are these going to be private personal homes? So I just want a little clarification on that, and I apologize if that question maybe is a little distorted. The next thing that I do want to ask, and I know that we talked about, we talked about stormwater management and so forth and the infrastructure, but here's a question in terms of the, where is it at? I apologize, the sewer establishment. Has any test been done on the sewer to make sure that they can actually have and actually have the capacity to handle 1,203 homes? I mean, that's a, that's something that should, you know, not, it hasn't been done. The sewer plant has to be able to have the capacity to handle that. That's additional. That's another question. I'll let other people talk about the stormwater infrastructure. They have questions about that. But one thing that I do want to state, and this is something I think is very important, especially when you're talking about misleading or misguided kind of underhanded dealings. And I don't mean this to be disrespectful to Mr. Mullins or his law firm, but recently, Mr. Mullins lost a court case for misrepresentation for the Friends of Worcester, which is a nonprofit organization that was opposed to the development of Palmer Village. Now, what was happening, what he actually lost regardless of the many cases of appeals, was the fact that a letter was sent from either Mr. Mullins' record or maybe probably his law firm, was stating that it was from the Worcester, the Friends of Worcester LLC, which is a corporation he established to impersonate the nonprofit organization, which even had the logo of a tree, which is what that organization, the nonprofit, has. That's their logo. So it confused, and I'm not saying intentionally tried to, you know, to be somebody quote-unquote, but he was, and did lose the court case of misrepresentation of the Friends of Worcester. But his letter, which went out to residents, stated that the Friends of Worcester, the nonprofit, which was against the Palmer Village, he stated that they were for the development of Palmer Village. And that went out to all of the other additional owners and landowners, which caused a lot of confusion, a lot of people being upset, and misrepresented one, not only that organization, but misrepresented himself. So all I'm saying is if that is something that he can do, that is unethical and a little dirty-handed business, it happens. I'm not saying it's completely out there. It happens in business, on the business, on the pharmaceuticals. And if I misrepresented my company in any way she performed, regardless of the drug that I was selling or even the product that I was selling, there are consequences. So when we talk about that second lawyer, we need him. Because if someone can turn around, and even in, it was the slightest thing, if someone can turn around and misrepresent and pretend to state something else, then who the heck is to say that we hold you're here? So I'm sorry, I asked, please, make sure the evidence is legit. It's not to say that his, rest of his business dealings may be like that, but if you can do that for once and misrepresent and upset a whole majority of people that live close to this other organization or this other area, then who's the heck to say he can't do it here? So please, please make sure everything he puts in is 100% true. No negation, no behind the scenes, hey, let's see where we can kind of manipulate. It has to be 100%. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
On the, on the. Well, on the issue of the single-family homes, that is part of what will be involved in the conditional use hearing, whether the Worcester case is controlling the applicant's position is that Medicare at different levels is available to the single-family residences and that therefore they count within the overall facility because that roughly is how it went down in Worcester. I do believe sewer capacity is already confirmed. Different lines might need to be improved to handle flow, but I believe the capacity is there. And on the last part, I'll, but Ed, do you want to address what she's saying about the case?
I'd be happy to say, if this were, you should check with your attorney before you make statements like you just made, because in fact, nobody lost a court case. There was never a hearing in the case. You're misrepresenting what happened in the case. So you better check your facts and be careful what you say.
Well, then in that case then, Mr. Mullins, may I ask, please, if I may, and I apologize if I have misrepresented, but I think it would be appropriate if you could give me where I can check my facts to make sure that I am representing and being respectful to you and your organization. I think that's a fair ask. Because if I've misstepped and misrepresented myself in the information, I sincerely apologize that I ask.
The litigation, I think it was appealed, it was never, it was never a hearing. There was a settlement conference and it was resolved and it turned.
But you did law. You did. You're a lawyer.
I'm sorry, sorry. I'm going to.
Okay, we're not.
Hold back. Okay, folks, please.
I just wanted to know where I could look at that properly, so I wanted to bring that in.
There is no record to look at. I guess maybe it's after the Friends of Worcester. They can give you some information.
Okay.
But the terms of the resolution were confidential to that.
Sorry for the hesitation, Mr. Mullins, and I appreciate that. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I ask you, please, to keep your comments to yourselves, please, just keep it straight.
Brad Workowitz, 138 Bennigan Road.
Hi, guys. All right, so I made a lot of thought of this, and that group said, I kind of question somewhere I wrote. I think it's still valid that you may address some of these points. So I'm going to try to leave you a little bit. Do you guys have?
Open the mic. I'm going to.
Sure. Is this better?
Yes.
All right, so yeah, I'm Brad Workowitz. I moved here in 2013. I admit, when I moved here, I wasn't aware of all the drama around Park House property in fact, in 2013. So this is all kind of talking about that. But one of the main draws for me when I came to this area was the open space, the quiet, the low density, the fact of congestion in this immediate area. I understand that some development is inevitable, not just here, but anywhere in this country, but also where there's open spaces. I also respect the right of the property owner to develop his or her land as long as it's ethical and respects his own ordinances. And those best for the community and, excuse me, you can allow them to make a little profit. But I think there's three components, such as what's going to benefit the land. I'm aware that my neighbors already expressed a lot of concerns through emails and previous meetings. I'm not very clear to date those. I'm hung up on fundamental, quite honestly. Like, I looked at this map for this tentative plan. I looked at the 2021 zoning maps that were published on the township's website, and I'm just still struggling with how this applies with that. And I understand what you said now, that there will be a hearing for the conditional stuff. But I mean, just fundamentally, the zoning map showed open space with an overlay for institutional use, right? So considering that, I mean, I looked at the proposed tentative plan, and I guess first of all, it's from my perspective, and I'm not a civil engineer, like, I'm not a land guy, I'm not a political guy. I just really struggle from basically understanding how this provides any continuity with the open space development. It basically, I'm sorry, obliterates any open space other than the land areas that could not be developed, from what I can tell, based on my recollections, basically where that little creek runs through the property. Second, of 1,200 plus housing units proposed, it appears, and again, based on, this is my layman's interpretation, less than 5% of those units, it's just one building, things tucked away in the corner, that is actually a traditional licensed medical care facility for senior citizens. All the rest is housing, townhouses, apartments, varying degrees. So maybe there is a plan to have each one licensed individually with care brought in daily. I don't know, I haven't seen that plan. But I'm just struggling with between the open space and the conditional use for licensed facility, how this applies with it, based on the information I have in front of me. If the planning board believes this plan does comply with these things, I admit, I don't know how the process works. I'm assuming this goes with the planning board here, and then you give a recommendation to the supervisors whether or not it complies. If that's not right, please tell me. But I'm assuming that's the case. And if it is, I'm just asking you guys, so please, if you guys end up believing this should be recommended as is, and it complies with the zoning, to provide some publicly documented rationale, what that is. Because I honestly fail to see how this complies at all. The other question I wanted to ask, and I think this came up with a previous lady, is if there are some ambiguities in zoning ordinances that could be manipulated by Riffland or others to basically allow legal room to get something like this in, I want to ask, I only talked about second counsel. I don't know how this one hearing stuff goes, but if the supervisors would be, I guess, open-minded and, like, fair, receptive, who represents the people? Who represents all the people here that are opposed to it? And I, I mean, I also came into this thinking, you guys and board supervisors are all elected, I don't know about you guys, but board supervisors are all elected officials, probably people here to represent what's in township's best interest. So I mean, if, if it's not them, based on what you told me right now, who is that? And that's the question I have.
You, anybody here can either represent themselves or hire a lawyer to also represent them or a group of you, and that's how ultimately. So, so I don't, I don't hear all the comments, I'm just trying to address you, so.
I appreciate that. Yeah, so.
Although the board of supervisors is acting in a judicial capacity in the eyes of the law, if they're, if they are providing a fair hearing and listening to all that evidence, that does protect you. You, they don't protect you in the sense that they're aggressively taking a position in the matter, but they are looking after you in the sense that they're listening to all the evidence and doing what the law tells them to do. But to take a, to answer you more directly, I would say, the answer to your question is, there's no other, on this side of the fence, there's no other sword swinging on your behalf. You have to sit, you can, you can come be a party and swing the sword, you can hire a lawyer to come swing the sword, but that's as far as this board can take it in the context of conditional use.
Yeah, okay, thanks for that clarification. I kind of expect a lot of people to bang to do their tops, honestly. But if there's going to be second counsel, I would kind of request that we get somebody that's equally, obviously, Riffland's guy's going to look for ways to make it in his benefit. I think we need to look for someone to take a very strict interpretation of the zoning ordinances and say, does this truly comply with that? And the last thing I have to say, honestly, is, again, I'm thinking of everything. I do have concerns about, you know, flooding, stormwater management, you know, environmental pollution, traffic, you know, the wildlife is going to be displaced because of this. I just really hope, I don't hope, I ask that there be a documented impact assessment of all that before final approval is given. If that comes out with hearing, great. If this is a place to get the comments, I'd like to see as far as they're hearing. If this is a place to get the comment, and is that likely to see us are they hearing, it's pretty record along with what everybody else, you know, already requested. And that's it. Honestly, I just want to, you know, thank you for your time, and kind of just, you know, opposed to this, based on what I see, and kind of just hoping, you know, you guys and board supervisors have the people's, the candy it doesn't get. Thank you very much.
Elvin Rodriguez, also of 138 Bennington.
My name is Elvin Rodriguez. I'm just here in support with Brad and the same profession, and I've been for about nine, 10 years. I just agree with everything he's saying, and I obviously don't have anything else to say.
Thank you.
One of the question, can everybody hear me first? Yeah, okay. The ordinance is in front of me, I think it says what it says, and doesn't say what it doesn't say. It says licensed nursing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now, is there some confusion about that, how are you dealing with licensed needs? How can I be confusing?
It will be licensed. It will be a licensed facility, as I understand the presentation. You're talking about whether each individual home has a license? That's part of, that's a part of what is going to be the hearing. They are going to make the argument that all of it counts as a licensed facility, and there may be evidence presented by someone else that that doesn't all count as a licensed facility. That's what the whole Worcester case was about.
Who's going to own an individual home? The person who owns the property now, or the person who lives there?
I'll answer that. The people who purchase the homes will be part of the overall facility, which is designed to provide aging in place, and all of the homes will have the benefits of the nursing and care from the assisted living, but they will, each individual home will not be licensed, but it will be owned. And unlike a typical CCRC, somebody doesn't have to pay $600,000 to move in there, and then pay monthly food, they can have their own house, and then that's needed, so gets here.
Is the care provided by the township, the county?
Really, this is more of a, I mean, obviously, some questions are, we're trying to be helpful and ask some questions, but you're taking on the direct issue that's going to be a part of the conditional use hearing, so I would ask you to defer the hard questioning. I understand your position on the licensing issue, but we're just really here to take comments on how you feel about it, as opposed to getting into cross-examination here about licensing.
Kind of directly the way I feel about it is, I'll repeat, it says what it says. It says licensed nursing, et cetera, et cetera. And my house, under the definition of as being closed, seems that I live in an institution of senior care. Are we taxed differently as institutions, or as residents? Will these residents be taxed as mine is? Will they pay school taxes, et cetera?
Yes, absolutely.
And is it the same rate of taxation as everybody else in the township has?
Their home will be assessed by the Board of Assessment, and whatever the assessed value is, overruled by the tax rate, is the taxes they would pay. So if they pay $600,000 for a home, will pay the same taxes that somebody else in the township pays a $600,000 home fee.
Thank you for that answer. I'll leave it where I said it. I believe this says exactly what it says. Worcester began. Thank you.
Victoria Bright, 364 Vison Drive.
Thank you. I'm gonna speak up, I have to, actually, I'm gonna turn the microphone, Dr. Riffkin, Mr. attorney. Good evening, I'm Tori Bright. I am at 364 Vison Drive. Now, I spoke last night, and I recognize that some of my presentation covers a lot of what has already been discussed. I think some of my neighbors are going to default their time to me, so I can cover thoroughly what one of the main points are that we would like to make, specifically around the records to the institutional codes, the licensed nursing, convalescent homes, residential care facilities for senior citizens, personal care homes, assisted living residents, or adult daycare, if in the same building as a personal care home or assisted living residence. That's more zoning allowance, that's what is zoned. It reads and is meant to read in its entirety licensed. So the proposal is not proposing an actual continuing care facility. It's proposing a quote, residential care for senior citizens, not a continuing care. That's not what the application states. It's a, a continuing care facility is a different model than what this model is. A residential care community or facility under the Department of Human Services regulations is either under the chapter 2600 or 2800. I'm sure you're familiar with these. So, so you would be familiar with the chapter 20 as well around licensure. And in the chapter 2800, under assisted living, there was actually a statement that said what the definition of a care facility is. So if I could take a moment to read what that definition says, it might clarify what this is not. Sheet sheets here. Of course, I have to print it out, because I can't read my phone, it's too small. The definition of an assisted living residence, a premise where the owner of the real property of the premise has no ownership, control, or affiliation with any provider of home-based or community-based services. Number two, this is under 2800, an independent living unit on campus of a continuing care retirement community governed by provider registration and the Slaughter Act, whatever the act was. If the residents in the unit receive or have legitimate opportunity to receive personal care services. So if this were to be a true continuing care community, all 1,203 residents must be able to have access in their own homes. Two, fire safety, resident health, nutrition, transportation, medications, safe management techniques, staffing, a variety of different general requirements. Dr. Riffkin, I sat there, you are sitting.
Absolutely, you are.
In their own homes. So licensed nursing in their own home.
I'm not going to argue with you about what it says and what it does. I don't need to present it to you, and we'll present our position, you can present your position.
So I, I appreciate that you're offering...
Oh, by the way, this is not Dr. Riffkin. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I don't know who you are. We didn't do our...
This is Gary Burman, and he is one of the members of the LLC, the most...
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So it's my understanding that all of the proposed homes, and according to the Department of Human Services representative that I spoke to today, who does licensing for the state, said only licensed floor wins spaced specifically within a building. Each building would require meeting the same conditions to be considered an assisted living facility. Again, I'm not opposed to senior housing. I'm not opposed to providing supports to individuals who need them. I am opposed to 1,203 clustered high-density units that are being called assisted living, when in fact, a 2,400-square-foot home, you're gonna have nurses, nutrition, and all of that available to them. So again, I, I question if that's what the conditional use application will present. So be it. But it's not actually what your zoning allowance is currently. The second thing that I'd like to just bring up again, and I brought it up last night, was around the actual township's comprehensive plan. I still have not been able to find and adopted 2020 comprehensive plan on their township's website. Maybe you have it, I don't know, it's in somebody's desk drawer or something, I appreciate that we're all busy. But the current 2010 plan, which is actually still current, because there's not been an adopted 2020 plan, has no indication of anything of housing, specialized senior housing, residential care communities within this township on open space property. So we're assuming that you're following your comprehensive plan. I'm going to call my comments to some of, and my time to some of my other neighbors, as I can see we're a little winky, but again...
Miss Bright, I may, just so we were clear, if you go to the township's website, planning and zoning, it's going to look a nasty picture, and under maps and documents, the 2020 comprehensive plan is listed right there.
The 2010 plan?
Yes, the 2020...
What I'm asking for is the 2020, yes.
Not written.
Not written. And according to the Act, it is required the townships have a 10-year comprehensive plan?
It's, it's, the 10-year is a suggestion, rarely do municipalities pick for that timeframe. Our previous plan was 1994.
I think the number counting is actually on their 2030 or 2040 plan right now.
Our previous plan was 1994, then we went to 2010, and while I'll admit, I would take full blame for not being written at this point. It, it is something that we do need to write, but it is not written.
The comprehensive plan, I would, the comprehensive plan is a, is a, is a guide, a planning tool, that usually comes into play when you're adopting a new ordinance and you look to make sure that it is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Here, we have an ordinance in place. There are disagreements on how it applies, but let's not go back down that road. But there's an ordinance in place, so the comprehensive plan wouldn't really have the same level of significance.
And, and the only reason why I bring it up is, again, timeframe here is, there's a 2010 plan, this property was sold in 2014, 2015, 2013, something like that. So that the current comprehensive plan that the county, that the township has indicates what the use of this property, this parcel should look like. Open space, certainly, there's an institutional overlay, we understand that. Park House has been there for, forever. But I, I do think that it's important for us to pay attention to that if it wasn't in your plan, then why is it in your plan now?
I live about two blocks from there, and I'm very, very discouraged about this, this slide. Very upsetting, because there's already been so much construction in the area. I was moved here, and there was a lot of open space. I've been here 21 years, and I also would agree with the point that I wrote that this is sacred ground. I don't know if you've heard that, that there's 1,700 people buried in this land, and, you know, in addition to all of the other reasons that everybody else brought up, which are all really, really concerning and very important points, I would like to address the fact that, you know, this burial ground has happened a lot.
Yes.
And...
I don't know, that's me, I don't know if you were at the meeting concerning what was brought up there, and Ed, at that point, said that we would do whatever necessary steps were needed to locate and move, or whatever has to be done, it's fine.
So...
It was brought up in our...
I, I still don't understand how all that is considered.
Well, it's certainly considered.
We already have less than 5% of the space, and now they want to take away our burial grounds? I don't understand why we're even considering this. So, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Martin Bauer, 136 Foxville.
Also of Foxville Drive, I, I feel that the waste of open space here and usage, I didn't even realize it was less than 5% in the township, and I, for one, probably, with a lot of people here, this just doesn't feel right. It doesn't seem right or feel right. So that's my opinion, and, you know, I hate to see that open space. I, I understand development needs to be done, but I, I don't think we have a lot of open space in the township left, obviously 5%. So, you know, that's, that's the question that I have, is what else can we have in the township? And, you know, I, I think it's not right, so, thank you.
Judy Sheets, 117 Old State Road.
Hi, my name is Judy Sheets. I live in that upper left-hand corner across Old State Road at 117. I'm going to be facing 25-foot townhomes, six of them in a row. I'm probably looking at the back of them. I don't know why they always do this to the development, face them away from the public road. I think it should be turned around. And Old State Road will have to be widened. My neighbor, who is just to the left of this property, his garage is almost up against Old State Road, so they'll be taking off from my side of the road to widen Old State Road. I have a four- or five-foot bank pitch, you'll have to dig out, and my drain field runs into that bank, towards that bank. I'm not sure how close to that bank is, because I'm concerned about what's going to happen there. Besides all that, there is so much runoff from the fields behind me, and I see all this impervious area being literally covered. I don't know where all this water is going to go. I know you said this part of conditional use, and it's not, I'm probably wasting my time here. But it is going to be running down into that stream, which is feeding into the Schuylkill River, and we know where the Schuylkill River goes from here, down to Montclair and Port Province. There, I'm going to speak this one. This is not going to just affect the NIMBYs, just through this backyard, it's going to be affecting quite a few other people, and I hope it's sort of them as well.
Two dollars, 300 bucks win.
Good evening, everyone. Basically, I just want to say what Kate just said about, I'm representing lower quarter of Montclair. With all this runoff, as we all know with Aida, and everybody was played, okay, it was down by Canal Street, Warner Street, Jacob, and Amelia. So this is something that we really have to look into, to make sure that this water, this stormwater is going to be running into the Schuylkill, which is always high down my range, coming in a little bit. and raining, coming in a little bit. Um, we really need to consider a, consider how these other homeowners are feeling. They don't want to lose their home. These are their investments for life, and we have to protect them. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
Martha Connolly, 209 Long Island Avenue.
I want to thank the Planning Commission for handling this off. I can't imagine what goes through your mind when you read this, a present, a meeting like this. So, just a couple of comments and some questions. In a packet that's online distributed, the professional work exhibited, on page 27, the planner says, "In my professional opinion, the plan appears to meet the conditions." And then on page 36, the county said that "The plan generally supports the applicant's proposal." These are very vague and open comments. Uh, I'm an engineer, and I say "in my professional opinion" often, but I also have to show my work product to make the case for critical decisions and designs. I'm not sure that this has really passed that test. And if it has, I would love to see the documents. I echo the first speaker, saying, "Where is the initial analysis that says this zoning, this application is consistent?" I don't want to say that work hasn't been done, but I think that in this situation, it needs to be presented. And I, my understanding is, is that that will happen. However, that's not your situation. You don't have that information. So, this question is very, very, very relevant for what you're going to decide. In my opinion, you don't have, unless there are other documents that have been presented by the county and the planner, to say definitively why their analysis resulted in this. I think it casts some serious doubt on your consideration. So, I have a request. My request is that the standard that you use making your decision for the supervisors follows both the letter and the intent of this zone. And I know that we're talking about qualitative and quantitative decision, but this is the hard work that you need to do. You have to read through things that have been written, decide what the intent is. And I suggest that you use this as the way you structure your vote. This plan, you to say yes to, has to, you have to agree beyond a reasonable doubt. I think there's plenty of people, and a lack of evidence that creates doubt. And I hope I use, I hope you use this standard and pass this hot potato one to the supervisors, so that we can get on to the real understanding, that it's my understanding will come through the conditional use, of whether this in fact is a, a healthcare facility, consistent with the zone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Beyond a reasonable doubt.
That's not, that's actually a criminal law standard. Doesn't apply here. That's not the test. But thank you for your comments overall. Thank you.
Susan Denby, 135 Bennington.
Can you hear me? Hi, Susan Denby, 135 Bennington. Thank you for having us here, or this planning meeting again, and, and I agree with everything that's said here, and I can't express how much it makes me sick to see 1,200 units going in a very small space, where I live downhill from that, and all I do is see that open space, and it is one giant hill down, and all I see is the runoff going on 113 when he goes around the bend and washes out the road. And my river runs right down this floods. Every time it rains now, we don't have hundred-year floods anymore. We have them every spring anymore. My, the real reason, the question I want to ask, because everybody's given some good ones here, is who writes our ordinances? Who's, who's in charge of that? Who does that?
Uh, well, that's...
This township. Who writes our ordinances?
It's a, it's a collective effort. It happens over years.
With who? Who is in charge?
Supervisors, the supervisors vote to adopt ordinances. They are written by, by a combination of people, uh, me, the local planning commission, the county planning commission, they put from the engineers, Jeff, um, sometimes from an applicant's attorney, sometimes they will write a draft ordinance and present it when they're making a request for a zoning change. Um, so all, really it's a very collaborative effort, and ultimately, whether it's owned by the supervisor.
And how often do you do that?
Well, there might be an ordinance of some kind adopted every month or every couple of months, but it, it, not necessarily a zoning ordinance. I mean, it, it's not an even number. I don't, I wouldn't know what number to say.
All right. But I read through the ordinances, and they were, you know, lots of taken, and some of them were kind of nebulous, and some of them did have some open interpretation, and I would hope that you would stick with the spirit of unders, having an underlay of the open space, and I know it's institutional, but I don't see how our ordinances come are any impact with Worcester. Who writes Worcester's ordinances, and what does that have to do with this place?
Obviously, as I said before, whether the Worcester case applies or doesn't apply will be one of many issues at the hearing. But I can tell you, even before going to the hearing, that the Worcester case, once, once, every case happened in one town. Cases go up and they just get decided by judges and then issue a published decision, and then that becomes the law of the land on that particular issue.
The law of the land everywhere? Like, really?
Yeah, yes, everywhere. That's how it works. But now you can find, you can find, hang on, you, you can find ways to try to differentiate it factually, or to say, "Well, this is why we're different, this is why it doesn't apply to us," but it becomes the law of the land. So when the Supreme Court rules that you have to give rights to a defendant before you question him, yes, it applies everywhere, to every state and to every town. It's the same thing with, you know, with the state decisions, state court decisions, it only applies everywhere within the state. Another state might borrow from it if they don't have rulings on that topic, so it's more limited in that sense. But yes, that ruling, once it was, especially after being affirmed by Commonwealth Court, became something that every town in the state would have to look at on that issue.
So then every county or every township needs to change their ordinances to reflect that?
No, not necessarily. They, not everybody, so many, some places might have, they might have no ordinance on it, or they might have a highly detailed ordinance on it, or they, but the, the superficial similarity between here and Worcester is that it's roughly the same language and roughly the same lack of definition of the terms.
Okay, thank you. And was Worcester created to be in a landscape where the character around it was nothing like what it was being, was being clocked into that building?
The thing, Worcester Township said to the developer, "You're just trying to put in single-family homes that aren't really single-family homes, and, and it's not really an extended care facility, because you're just trying to jam in single-family homes into a place that doesn't need that definition," which sounds very much like what many people have said in these last two meetings. There is an undeniable similarity. I'm not saying in the end that the case will prevail if there are factual distinctions, but to say you don't even have to look at it is just not right.
Okay, well, I would ask you to not follow it and, and be a, be a leader instead of being a follower.
Hi, I'm Ray Rocio, 374 Vista Drive. Thank you for your time. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. Uh, first, I'd like to say I'm excited. Unfortunately, I'm responsible for a petition going around. I just checked, it looks like we're up to 713 people. Please, uh, please, my counsel, anybody else wants to sign up? If you want, they're happy to have it. Thanks. Um, I have just a couple of quick questions. It seems like every day and every hour, things are moving pretty quick here, and I learn new information, and sometimes it's not always right or correct. But, uh, one of the things I was curious about for the society here that's sitting behind me, to figure out what next steps might be. So, this would move to a conditional hearing, and I heard Jeff write earlier, one of the conditions for that might be that we need some more information from the gentleman sitting right here. Is, is there some kind of step that has to happen before we move to a conditional hearing, so everybody here knows what that would be, so we don't get caught apart by it?
Right now, we do not have a conditional use hearing scheduled. If we, if we were to schedule one, they would present their testimony, their information would be presented then. It's not necessarily going to be over one night, it might take a few nights, we would have time to review some of that information, whatever they presented, and we would move forward with the hearing. It really is based on what the supervisors and how they run, and how they, what information they're looking for, and what information presented.
Sure. So you sent a letter, I believe in September, end of September, saying, "Here's some reviews of the plan."
Yeah.
"We'd like some additional information." Is there anything hidden in there that would be a litmus test for us going to a conditional use hearing, or is it not necessarily needed?
As with other developments, and, again, this applies to all development, land development intention. Add-tentative sketch is a very, very basic sketch. A lot of my letters deal with, "We're going to need this information at preliminary, we're going to need this information moving forward, we're going to need these planning clarifications moving forward." And applicant can move forward without doing those if they so choose. The board here, the planning commission here can ask them, they can move forward if they so choose, and the, the board can ask also. Most of that is required at preliminary plan, because it's more factual and hard engineering. And that, and that's where we tend to get the bulk of the information.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that we kind of have clarity around, if it does move to that, that there's something that's did, that happened before it goes to that, but it sounds like they can just go there if they want to, it's preliminary.
Well, with conditional uses, it's even more loosey-goosey than that. They can go whenever they want to, they can go anytime up to final plan approval, because that's just the way it's structured with municipal planning though. But in no definite date, you have to do it. If you look at the township historically, we tend to run conditional uses and tentative sketch at the same time. In this case, I don't know if that's how it's going to happen or not. It's up to the applicant with any of those.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, so, part of the petition that was put together, there's a number of members that helped, I certainly did do it, but anyways, I'm not capable of it, but Janine was a great help in building it, and some others. But one of the points that came out as a meeting of, uh, members of the community who met over a week or two, a couple weeks ago, it was stated that the county, uh, when they sold the land originally, that only 15% was deemed developable due to flow rates of water runoff. It's not reflected in the current plan. A number of people spoke about that, you know, if the flooding issues continue, uh, it will increase significantly. And I guess I find that most interesting now, when I look and see who was part of the commission at that time, the last time I checked, it was just one of them's governor a day or so ago. So I'd really love to see if anybody from the supervisor or the planning committee could find out if it's truly just something that was said, or if the county misrepresented the fact that only 15% was deemed developable, because clearly that's more than 15%. So, and if we could do it to get some resolution to that, that would be great also. And thanks for the clarity.
Thank you.
Hi, so I just wanted to say, I lived here my whole life in the city. So, in the last two years, when I was alive, I remember all the open spaces we had. Lots of open spaces, we'd go and plan them, you could flood down anything you wanted, not a problem. And then I sold it, and, you know, all the stuff's built up, I get it, development happens, people move forward, I get it. But that's a lot of space, a lot. If you put the stuff good, that's been built before, I don't know how much that that would make, but that's a lot. And that's one of the only big open spaces we have left, and I do what I'm doing, so I would like to stay there.
Thank you. William Bell, 133 Old State Road.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, you know, it's my hope and opinion that, uh, the Board of Supervisors should not be compelled to approve a development plan which does not comply with the zoning, and which will in the long run be a burden to the township, the municipal services, and the citizens of the community in hand. And I would ask if this commission should recommend denial of this plan.
We hit the end of our organized list. If someone would like to come up, I thought that gentleman's hand up first.
John McGuigan, 103 Bennington Road. I want to thank the planning commission for your hard work. I know it's volunteer position. It's not easy. I want to address my comments to this gentleman. Could you do me a favor? Could you turn around and look at all these people here? I would like you to do it again. All these people here?
Yep.
Okay, if all these people in this room worked hard to get their share of the American dream, to buy a house, to raise their family, to send them to good schools, you come along with your investors, you speculate in land, and you spend months coming up with a scheme to short-circuit the system and put something like this so you can make an almighty dollar. You made it through.
My client happens to own the ground, there's statues of the ground...
That's great.
...to develop it, in accordance with the terms of the zoning ordinance. Thank you for your time.
You made all of us come out here tonight because of your greed. And guess what? You come here next month, we'll be here. You come here the month after that, we'll be here. You put shovels in the dirt, we'll be there.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate you keep it, keep it professional. Please, we're all, this is a very tense situation, I understand that, but please, let's, let's keep it professional.
Everybody hearing? Sean Biesel, uh, six, Charmar Lane, it's conservative, it's called Morris Court, Pennsylvania. Um, I understand you want to make some money, but I can see maybe a quarter of this development, but not this shit show. This is ridiculous. My parents grew in, uh, 136 Long Street, and their house got flooded. I can see this being higher, making even worse than it was. They had water up to their, your knees, being evacuated. We had to dig them out, what a complete mess it was. You do this, this is going to get worse. Port Providence, all the way down, it's complete. Yeah, I don't agree. Maybe a quarter of us could not.
Thank you.
Ryan Schlegel, 16 Derby Circle.
Oh, you're going to have to spell that one for me. That's our guy, really.
16 Derby Circle.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you for your time to speak today. Um, since, from a hearing standpoint, are all impact studies public knowledge? Will he be able to review those from stormwater management, feasibility market studies, Phase One environmental reports prior to a hearing that is started?
No, not, not in connection with the hearing. The hearing evidently starts on the first night of the hearing. Um, court cases in court have what are called discovery rules, where you swap stuff back and forth. That doesn't apply here. Some of the...
Okay.
Some of those come up sometimes in connection with the land development plan itself. Stormwater is too early on that part of it yet because that's not covered.
No engineering is uncovered, I understand.
Right, right.
Now, from, once engineering is completed and storm management is done, can there be a request, if there's a lot of concern with flooding, because of, with IED and with the amount of runoff that will continue, potential loss of life, just the area of flooding, could that be a request as part of the stormwater management with the feasibility study?
As a general statement, and people are going to be maybe quick to say, "Well, I know of that one time," it's an exception. As a general statement, when a property goes from being undeveloped to developed, the stormwater capture makes it better, not worse.
Oh yeah, no, stormwater, I understand.
The basins are over-engineered. I'm not aware of one that, I think, might have heard of one that we've failed once, that I don't think they're, they failed because they're over-engineered. So, of all the issues, I mean, stormwater capture gets better. So, of all the different comments, and I understand all of them, that's the one I probably understand at least, because that situation generally improves with development. Not understanding everyone's opinions about the plan, gentlemen.
Understood, without having an engineer.
I see, right.
It's all hypothetical.
Right, right.
I just was curious to see if that's all part of how the development process is, because this is all.
Yes. Yeah, all, every step is, once we have something, it's subject to right to know, to give to anybody in public.
Okay, nice. Thank you for your time.
Hold on, I forgot, is this lady's first?
Good evening, thank you for your time. Kristen Travelin, 1320 Blackmore Road. I did speak at the supervisors' meeting last night. My concern is the institutional overlay for this parcel. Your ordinance says the institutional district shall be deemed to be an overlay on designated properties in Upper Providence Township. This parcel is not on your official list. Your official list was amended in December of 2017. This was subdivided off, and it has a brand-new parcel number, and it is not anywhere in the two pages on your list. The 32 or so acres where the nursing home currently sits is, and one of the things that I read, and I'm not a lawyer, paragraph B under the concept says, "Should the institutional district boundaries be revised as a result of legislative or administrative actions or judicial decision, the zoning requirements applicable to the area in question shall revert to the requirements of the underlying zoning district without consideration of this article." The underlying zoning district is open space conservation, which either one, open space or IN, does not allow for residential development. Thank you.
Yeah, I think she jumped right ahead of you.
I'm Nancy Croft, Agent 136 Fox Run. I just went to peek back off of the other gentleman's questions. And Mr. Beslin, you had mentioned that wastewater gets better with new developments.
Stormwater.
Stormwater, okay. Is that applicable to floodplains?
You can't build in floodplains generally.
But this is right around a floodplain, is it not?
They can't build within the floodplain.
So this is not a floodplain, but is...
Well, I'm not saying there's no floodplain anywhere on the property, I have no idea, I haven't found that far into it. I'm just giving you as a general statement, you have to get special to be able to ever build in a floodplain.
Okay, so, there's really no studies that show that the wastewater gets better?
Stormwater.
Stormwater, it's better with, in floodplains. Is that correct?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying the overall amount of stormwater that leaves a property uncontrolled, when it's not developed, becomes controlled after the basins are built.
Oh.
The basins are built on-site, the water has to be held back on-site. There's no engineering yet, I don't think we even know yet how all the stormwater is being addressed. We've said several times, we're ahead of stormwater rate and we're not at that yet.
I can see where it would get better with, you know, developments in typical areas and regions, but this is not a typical region. I'm concerned with, not being protected by the rich.
Hi, good evening. Blake Welling, 135 Bennington Road. I'm another engineer who looks at this plan and looks at the township ordinance definition of a residential care facility, and I don't possibly, I can't conceive of how this constitutes a facility. It looks like a development. I, I look at compliance every day as part of my role in my job. I don't see how this meets the letter, spirit, intent of a licensed healthcare facility. Second point I'd like to make, I understand that the conditional use hearing has not been scheduled. What is the scheduling, advanced scheduling requirements, noticing requirements? Are there any capabilities to delay or issue a motion to delay? I am concerned about this group having sufficient time to prepare and be represented fully in that conditional use hearing.
The municipal planning guidelines need 16 days for a hearing from the time they apply. Obviously, they apply, I think the application date is May of last year. In all of our applications, we have a clause that says you waive the NPC requirements. Right now, I do not have any time limit or any time constraints on this application. That isn't to say that an applicant, it's in the applicant's court, they can remove that at any time. Right now, there is no schedule, there is no discussion of a schedule for conditional use hearing.
But will this group have advanced notice? Will they have time to prepare?
If you, anybody, I think this is in the NPC, I know this for zoning here at the CHP, if you put something in writing to the township that you wish to be included in the notices that go out, then you'll be included.
And also conditional use.
Then you'll have as much time as anybody here, because as soon as we schedule it, then we get that notice.
Conditional uses are also, the property is signed, we advertise it, it's put on our township website, and that's well in advance. Because the advertising has to be, I think, a month before, the signage has to be at least two weeks before.
Twice in the paper, two successive weeks, not further out than 30 days and not closer than seven, that's the rule. So that's when it would be, and then you'd have that much time, you know, depending on when it ran, you'd have somewhere in the neighborhood of a couple of weeks ahead of the first hearing. And that's all the time that anybody gets, we can't, that's just how it goes.
Thank you.
It doesn't really, you know, I think I understand where you're heading, but the fact of the matter is, nobody, nobody has the evidence until the hearing starts. You're saying you're not any more disadvantaged than whatever the township uses, we need to afford anybody, the hearing, when the hearing starts, you start receiving evidence.
Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, I just, so... Please come to the mic. Grab her, please, again. I just want to declare, I'm understanding, so, the conditional use hearing is open to the public, correct?
Yes.
And from what you just said, I heard right, we'll have seven to 30 days notice before we actually have.
Well, it depends what date it's selected, roughly that's correct. The first, the first ad generally runs about three weeks before the hearing. And they're also all put on the township website, all the schedules on the township website too.
And then could you contact if you want to be the first one?
I guess you'll send it to Jeff.
Yes, I'll check.
Right. Thank you.
I've heard here a few of them, I've got a few, so.
Hi, Ken Anderson, 123 Patriot Drive, Alachville. I don't want to get into the weeds about whether or not in this hearing, they're going to prove that this is going to need the definition. I was assuming this is going to be like a continuing care, retirement community, like the one that was in my hometown growing up, where you didn't buy an actual property, you bought into a community, you gave them out. Kind of like where I did. You started a house and then you moved into the maintenance facility. So I'm still, just wondering one, why there's no, what is your business plan? Like, can we not see the business plan of this model before the hearing to understand? I mean, they have to have it because it's got to make economical sense to them to do this. So why can't we see something so we take those questions away as to what the plan is for this care throughout all those units? And secondly, to be in the spirit of the ordinance is open space with an institutional overlay, correct? So we, correct?
Well, that is what it says. Open space is a very curious designation for private land, it's not generally, open space isn't usually, there's not usually an attempt to apply it to privately held land.
Okay.
But it really isn't in play when the person, when the applicant's pursuing the overlay.
Okay, so, but the definition of that is talking about a school or a church or something that most of us would think would have a long winding drive, tree line drive into a building somewhere in the middle of the property. I think the biggest problem with this is that the open space is preserved, it's in the part of the land that you can't even develop, and it's in the middle. So, I actually left my dentist clinic today and drove around this property, just to really appreciate what we have here, because I think I've been taking it for granted for a long time, driving by, and now, I took that drive to look and say, "Wow, it's amazing what we could be looking at, especially driving down Old State Road." The fact that this community or this rendering is, every building is right up enough to all the roads, there's absolutely no appreciable open space for the community to see driving around this property without going into the property and going to the floodplain or something. So, there's nothing to say for us anymore if this gets built. It's just going to be tall, houses, backs of houses, like you mentioned, and I'm definitely against this and hope that you will fight for us. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I completely missed your name and address.
Ken Anderson, 123 Patriot Drive.
Bob Delacronis, 301 Mississauga. Three points I would make. First point, I support all the speakers that were up here tonight, they made a lot of the points, I can't add any more points to that, but support all of those things that they're saying. Second thing, I support the idea of the second lawyer to get involved, to do the research. Everybody's been doing research here, calling up the three points, they think it's going to be formal. I don't know if there's anything that would stop the second lawyer. You mentioned having the second lawyer for the supervisors. I don't know what's involved in making that happen, or if there's something that could prevent that from happening, or if we understand that a little bit, so that lawyer could be involved to make that review and make clean, you know, understand the interpretations, understand the issues, and organize those issues, and give us transparency into what's happening here too. I totally wish just having you show up and hear what that is.
There's no complication in the process, there's only, there's one decided appellate court case that allows the hiring of the owner attorney. It doesn't say how to do it, there's no rules to do it, it would simply be a matter of the supervisors authorizing the expense to retain somebody. So that's not hard, it only hasn't been done because we haven't scheduled a hearing yet.
Okay, bud, so my point would be, the message back to the supervisors then would be, that's an important thing, they're expenditure involved in doing that, we should make sure that we find a way to get that out. And the last thing is kind of what I want, and I think it's the same thing that we do every day, so your hearing company, they're what. We don't want to allow a situation where there's a decision that gets made or almost forced upon us based on stretching interpretations and spinning and having kind of legally a burden that really goes against and distorts the intention and the spirit of the ordinance and the actual verbiage of the ordinance as well. And that's why I think it's so important to have a lawyer involved in that, to help us through that process, to make sure that it's being strictly enforced and it's not just based on interpretation and spin.
Jackie Turner, 412 St. Road. Just following up with that gentleman, if there is an attorney or lawyer for a conditional use to hear, who decides who the attorney is? Do you guys pick that attorney or?
I would make a recommendation to the board.
But, do, I mean, so, we really, the people don't have a decision as to...
No, I'm sorry, you can hire your own, but that'll be internal, and it will be someone who, if that's done, and I do believe the supervisors support doing it, it will be someone who's highly qualified in the area of zoning.
Okay.
I know a lot of people.
I just wanted to make sure on that point.
Yep.
Make sure that we, the people are included in the decision. Thank you.
Hi, Steve Rysel, 319 World Brook Lane. I just want to make one comment, looking at this map, you were to zoom out and look at the housing around it. I moved into this township in 1996, and there was a requirement that every house had to be built on a builder's acre, 4,000 square foot, nothing small. Now, they did make some leeway for some developments where they said, "Oh, we'll let you build two homes as long as, on each other a third acre, as long as you base up that hub, third of your entire property, and make it open space, and kept that open." Okay, now you're looking at a property with eight, 10 times the standard density of everything else in the area. And I'm just shocked by that. And I'm definitely against this. I've spent a lot of money adding to my house, making sure it's a wonderful place for us to live, that I hate to have to leave because all of a sudden, you can't maneuver in the neighborhood because of traffic and just the, this huge development. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Clyde Aller, 197, Robust Road. I just wanted to know, what if we, he builds it, they don't come? Well, I've had a chance to buy a home, and nobody's quite right. Is there a possibility where age-restricted facility can become a normal residential facility? I understand that's happened in the township.
Well, you raised it, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I, age-restricted facilities within the township were rezoned because of hardship and they couldn't sell their property, could that also happen here?
Well, there are properties that get rezoned, and there's no rule that says it couldn't be any kind of property, but to, two points in response to your comment. Generally speaking, and I think, I know I said this at the first planning commission with age-restricted people here, viability, the viability of a project is not something that's in play unless the applicant is asking to change the zoning ordinance. If the applicant comes in and says, "I can only do, I'd like to do this job, but to do it, I need to change the zoning ordinance this much." Well, that's totally up to the supervisors' discretion whether they feel like changing the ordinance. And in that instance, they can say, "Well, we'll think about it, but you need to show us that this will work before we're going to change the ordinance." But if the applicant's not looking for a zoning change, viability isn't really in play. The township doesn't make decisions on whether projects will fail or succeed. On the issue of changing the zoning, the zoning could even still, it's a confusing scenario that unfolded here because of the drive to say... scenario that unfolded here because of the drive to say, these signs that say, State Park House Farm. I think most people from the first meeting did accept that something ultimately will go there, it's not going to be open space forever, it's privately held land with the right to develop. So there was a hue and a cry about, don't change the zoning, the supervisors each committed to not change the zoning, and I think, and I'll let them speak for themselves, but I think that they, at least most of them, feel that they would not break that promise to people unless people agree with it. In other words, really the question now is, if, if we could get what most people would call a better plan, would people embrace a zoning change to do that? Or do people want to stand and say, no, stay, stay the course, don't, don't change the zoning, we believe you'll win if you just fight hard enough to win under the current zoning? So I think eventually there could come a point where we do ask people to say, look, the situation is evolving, here's what we're looking at, you know, here's this plan, what do you think about a different plan with residential that's not this? But to do that, it would need a zoning change. So right now, there's, it's clogged because of the promises not to change the zoning.
But it does happen.
But it does happen.
And, God, I hope it doesn't happen here. It's expanding up, we've got 1,200 units with no kids, and no school, and no buses.
I don't think it would happen here based on, I don't think it would happen here without, without public buy-in for that idea, because otherwise the supervisor could stand by their promise to not do that.
I mean, it didn't happen like at Millenfield Track Road, the rest of the development, my understanding is that was age restricted and it actually turned to residential? I think there was a couple other ones in the township too.
Well, there's separate rules when you're in under fair housing for age restricted, you can't just turn around and turn it into something else the next day. I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but there is, there is a limit that way, not from the township side, but from, you know, when you sold to people under that covenant, you can't just turn around and then say, just kidding, and undo it. But zoning changes in general do happen.
Jim Mullin, 206 Country Ridge Drive, my first planning year. So really, thank you for the explanation upfront, because I've heard a lot of emotion, I promise not to start saying it. So a lot of emotion, I know, and you know, the supervisors have had a tall task here, this is a very flashpoint. I guess, I was a little disappointed here, we didn't really have something, like chasing our side, right? So I, regardless of your second attorney, would that second attorney be a little more biased towards our opinion than you?
Well, the whole is quite different. Well, there's people with different opinions and different issues that they find more important than other issues, but that person, what that person would be tasked with would be presenting things on top of what the applicant presented to create a full argument and present the other side of the podium. So generally, yes.
So he would be a little bit more biased, I mean, at least preparing for?
That person would have a more, would be advocating a specific position, whereas supervisors and myself are not, in the here.
So does the hearing itself stick to like structural, runoff, storm runoff?
That's actually more the land development process, and I said to the other involved members, this is your first meeting, but really the most, regarding the details of the actual construction, the preliminary approval is the most important step, not this sketch, sometimes you just don't even have sketch plans as a part of the ordinance, it's really the preliminary is the more important one. And then the hearing is going to be more focused on the, if you go to the conditional use ordinance, and where it states the criteria that you have to meet, those are what the focus of the hearing.
So, so the rest of the business plan about offering care for all 1,200 homes, none of that?
That will be at the hearing.
That will be tested in the hearing?
Yes.
So, so I mean, I think that's a big thing, and I really hope that that gets flushed out, because I have a father in senior living room right now, they can't get staffed, they only eat residence rights, so there's staffing issues and quality assurance issues and turnover and training, and if you do something on that magnitude, having had a father in the home for five years, just, I can't even fathom. So I hope that that is as much as the word run off is, how they can staff and manage and fully manage, get there and offer their services, what those services are, and then how they can do that, because I think that's almost as important.
That's the hearing, stormwater is land development, all the other stuff you're talking about is conditions.
Oh, awesome, thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Henry, 134 K10 Y. With everybody else in here, this is great, maybe I haven't seen it. But what I'd like to know is, this could be a healthcare, healthcare facility, so are they going to have pole stations and all the bathrooms? Are they going to have sprinkler systems throughout the house? Are they going to have fire doors at the bedrooms? Are they going to have ramps going into rooms? These are all places, all things that healthcare places have, and I bet you not one of the things are in those buildings. So it's not a healthcare, it's a joke. Thank you.
Just have one question, you being the solicitor for Upper Providence Township, obviously you give advice to the planning commission. Have you looked at the ordinance, and what do you think the chances are that we can deny it? And are we going to deny it and fight it, or are we just doing things here that have been come out, and it's going to be pushed through and out because we're looking at Worcester and saying, you know what, the state's going to appeal, let it go to the state? Or are we saying that we're going to look at it, because obviously, these planning commissions, I know they're the judge, but they're not lawyers?
The planning commission is not the judge, they do not, they do not decide the case. They make a non-binding recommendation to the supervisors.
And the supervisors, and any lawyers and supervisors?
Say that.
Are any of the supervisors lawyers?
No.
But they'll make a decision on if it goes to, if it goes to the state, or if they say no?
It goes to North Town.
It goes to North Town, okay. But as your recommendation currently?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of questions in there.
Yeah, my basic question is, the lawyer for, you're the lawyer for Upper Providence Township, you look at the ordinance, is it hold water?
I made the statement at the first planning commission meeting that superficially it appears that they meet the criteria in the ordinance, but it still has to be proven. There are very subtle legal arguments that are going to be made at the hearing, so I, well, anybody who knows me here, there are people here who I've represented, by the way, knows that I don't do like the percentages thing on the outcome of cases. I can tell you that as I look at it superficially, the example I gave last night was that I stated before the Eagles played the Saints that the Eagles would beat the Saints, and it was a common, commonly held opinion, it was backed by the Las Vegas bookies, and yet that's not how it happened, because you have to play the game, you have to have the hearing. As Jeff and I, as consultants and I, look superficially at the application, it appears compliant, but it hinges on this, on one case, with a lot of subtleties in the analysis after the evidence is heard. So I, no, I cannot, you say there's the ordinance hold water, the ordinance is a valid ordinance, but in terms of how it's going to come out, the board has 45 days after the close of evidence to sort through all of it and make a decision. And it doesn't really matter that any of them are not lawyers, I will be helping them through the process of legal issues. Okay?
Right.
Hang on, is there anybody who hasn't gone a first time yet?
Wendy Wedderall, 334 Meadowview Drive. I was at the previous planning commission meeting last month and spoke then, and I'd just like to speak again, I still feel that so many people in this room are in opposition to this plan, residents of the township and nearby townships. Once open space is gone, it's gone forever, it's not going to come back. At the last meeting, when I asked the question, I think the gentleman said that this was going to be an age restricted community, you know, 60 plus or whatever, governed by a homeowners association, that was what I heard at the last meeting. I lived in a development that had a homeowners association. Eventually, they get a board, people are elected to their board, they can change their rules at any time. So that's something to keep in mind as well. I don't know what else I can say except that reading that ordinance, not being a lawyer, but thinking about institutional, it's probably institutional because the parkhouse existed there for a long, long time, the rest of it is open space, it just follows by mom, and I'm incredulous that 1,200 individual family units could in any way be considered nursing facilities. It's not a continuing care retirement community, it's going to be 1,200 units and then a little 40-bed nursing facility somewhere on the property. I think it really stretches the boundaries, and I think if the people here really want to make sure to continue opposition of this, we need to have a lawyer fighting for our point of view. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I missed your address and name again.
Wendy Wedderall.
Okay.
334 Meadowview Drive.
That's in track?
Right.
Okay.
Good evening, thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak. My name is Sarah Clark, I'm a resident property owner at 135 Walnut Street in Montclair, Pennsylvania, and I would just like to take a moment to speak that I did go through the flooding, and I did, the last time I was in this room was for one of the meetings to discuss how the government was planning to buy out property owners because their homes were considered to be, better to be made as open space rather than to use federal dollars in order to provide insurance payments to rebuild our homes. Which I may add, in case you're not aware, that there are property owners who still cannot live in their homes which were damaged by Hurricane Ida on September 1st of 2021. That being said, when we look at this plan, this sketch, if I'm understanding, this is my first time at one of your planning meetings, in the lower left corner, I can clearly see the Spookel River flowing through. And having had the Spookel River flow into our property when the flood occurred, and seeing the tremendous response of emergency services to evacuate residents and provide emergency medical care for senior citizens who live on Walnut Street who needed to be evacuated, thank goodness there were no fatalities in Montclair during that incident, however there were in Montgomery County, I believe there were five residents who did die in that natural disaster. That being said, if the conditional use hearing is going to look at this being an area where we're going to have 60, 65 and over, you know, senior citizens, people who do need differing levels of medical and supportive care, I think that it is not if, but when the next catastrophic flood does occur in our area, not only are the people of Montclair, Port Providence going to need emergency services, but the people who live in this community are already going to need that emergency service protection. I believe one of the propositions is to have those services there on the property or nearby. I was looking through some of the notes, it's a lot to digest, I have to say. So that being said, it is not a matter of if, but when the next disaster occur, and it will be on everyone's conscience, and the legal implications put that aside, but it will be on someone's conscience that will there be a loss of life in the Montclair, Port Providence area because we do not have the capacity to provide services for this area? And I'm not sure if the position of emergency management was built for Upper Providence Township, because that was a big issue at that time, but I would be interested in what the emergency management, or of the township would have to say about this type of plan, the services needed, and its relative close proximity to a flood plain where catastrophic loss of property occurred, to the extent that FEMA and FEMA are providing funds to purchase the properties and non-residents in that area. Which I guess that gives the township some more open space and space to desire. So I'll see myself now, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Stephen Wagner, 214 Norwood Street in Montclair. If you, if you look at the little picture up in the top right there, you see how the river winds around and the proposed development is sort of surrounded by water. The area around here is, when the bridges are either underwater, or there's tractor-trailer stuck underneath an overpass like down in Phoenixville, it's very difficult to get around. If there's 1,200 buildings, 1,200 houses in this development, in this proposed development, I'm calling it development, just sort of puts it what it is. Figure 1,200 houses, half of the people living in this house has probably two vehicles, that's like 1,800 vehicles, plus figure 500 staff to run the facility, that's like 2,300 vehicles. There's no direct access up to 113 onto 422 to go in either direction, so you're coming down Black Rock Road, you're either getting on it onto 422 at Lala, or you're coming down this way and going through Royers Court where the schools are, and traffic's going to be a problem.
Anybody else on the list, then?
I have a wrong, I just wanted to add relevant to people staying in touch. I believe that the website, and please correct me if I'm wrong, has subscriptions to the supervisory meeting, so everybody who wants to stay involved, subscribe to the supervisor's agendas and meeting schedule.
I totally agree with everything that's been said tonight, I just want to piggyback on what the gentleman just said about the track. We live back off of Drive Opus, not very huge developments, but we only have one way out. We have the train behind us, the bird run on site, and the old property plant on the other. We come out every day, Tori Bray mentioned this last year, last year, last time we were here, and we, that four-way intersection, we totally risk our lives coming out of there every day, because no one knows what's going to happen. So we talked last time about the popular, the circle put in there, the circle went in over at Bywagans, and those 500-plus apartments are already filled, and nobody knows what they're doing. I mean, I know it's new, but I just can't even imagine the traffic that comes over the bridge at night, and then I know the single lane bridge would have to be redone, but I know no traffic evaluations or whatever have been done until the engineers come, but no one's really, I think, old state, that, I don't even know how they would change that because it's a blind herd, there couldn't be a stop sign, there couldn't be a traffic light. I lived here for 26 years, and we have numerous times asked about the four-way intersection, and we've been told that 113 is a state road and a light can't be put there. And there have been so, I mean, you can sit there and there's a near miss almost every time you pull out, and basically it's like unless someone's killed, they're, they're not going to be able to do anything. So I just... So I just feel like this in itself is completely overwhelming to me. Not at all understandable, but all of it that's going to be affected by it. For the entire township, everybody uses this way to get into Phoenixville. It's not just our couple, you know, the people that live right there, it's everyone. So I just wanted to catch you.
Could you come for a second? Nine seven eight Second Avenue.
Can, can, can you please call that one?
Yeah, can I finish how, hello, Rebecca?
No, you're on.
K R P F E R S C H.
I'm sorry, please, sorry.
K R P F E R S C H M I B C. I'd like to vote. And many of these people, even though you're not calling for a vote, for a second lawyer. I've been at a few meetings right now and you kind of, sir, I feel like it's an open and shut case, which it is not. Your, him, that, I feel like from everything you've said, and you may not mean to come across this way, that you feel it's an open and shut case. So I'm discouraged. I think we're discouraged.
I think you misunderstand the second lawyer. The second lawyer doesn't mean I'm being replaced. I'm sorry that you feel we do.
That's fine.
I, what I have tried to emphasize to you.
I just want to say that I'm asking that there be a second lawyer because a lot of us feel with you that it's an open and shut case. That's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
And I, thank you. I, I've, I've received a number of personal insults in connection with this application. I don't really care. I, I, I've tried to be as clear as I possibly can that it will be contested at the hearing. And if there's a basis on which to deny, it will be. Yes, I gave an opinion in advance that superficially it does appear to meet the criteria of the ordinance. But fortunately for you, ma'am, and the others who think like you, uh, it is more like, far more likely than not that the other attorney will be, um, involved in the case. Uh, what I tried to make clear is that there was even a case where the attorney was not neutral in his presentation to the, in his questioning of the witnesses at the hearing. The case was reversed because the me was not neutral. And I have tried to be, to be clear that I'm being neutral. And if you take that as me being weak or equivocal, that I can't, I, I don't, I won't say I don't care, but I don't.
I, I'm not asking you to care. I'm just asking you to listen. We don't know what you think, but some of us are worried based on things you've said that every single me.
I'm aware.
That you're saying you're trying to stay neutral.
I'm, I'm sorry.
But everything you say seems like it's an open and shut case.
If you're going to be speaking, you need to be in the mic because they will not hear you on the tape and you will not be able to be heard. So if you want to continue, please do. Step up and you can say what you need to say.
I'm not saying anything against you personally. I'm saying I don't know how you feel. And you may feel very differently than you're coming across. I'll allow for that. But I can only go by, some of us can only go by what we hear. And it feels like you think it's an open and shut case. If you don't, that's wonderful, but let's get a second lawyer. If you do, that's the way it is, but let's get a second lawyer.
Thank you. All right, um, Mr. Mullin, um, do you have anything else? I think you initiated early with the beginning and you didn't have additional.
I'm sorry. I, I can wait throughout.
I was wondering actually, because I think it's a full house. We did this last month. Is there a possibility that the applicant can talk through the sketch?
Talk through what?
Talk through the sketch. At the last meeting, I think we asked where on the sketch? Because, you know, when we're, we're looking at it on a page, you can't really see what some of the specifications are and things like that. You have to come to the township. I imagine most of us work or, or have nine to five kind of jobs that prevent us from actually coming during the working hours of the township. So I'm wondering if this evening, could you, first of all, tell us where is the assisted living building on this sketch? Can, can we do that? Can, can someone show us where it is?
Yes.
I'm sorry. You're, you're going to have to, you're taking my mic when you're here. Tell us who you are. Same roles, why? Get up out of your area yourself.
And does this get on camera? I mean, this, the audience who's listening to this?
I think so, yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Thank you.
I am Jake Pickering with Fuller. We're part of the plant here. So this building right here is the assisted living.
Is that the stamp?
If we walk over to you, so we probably do this. So my question was, what's the, where is the assisted living? And that's the assisted living building right there, which is next to what, over here?
Those are apartment buildings.
For those of you who have ever visited an assisted living facility or Shannonville, there is usually a main entranceway. Where's the entranceway to the assisted living?
That has not been determined yet by the.
A roadway has not been determined?
Oh, a roadway?
Roadway.
I thought it was just a building, sorry. Uh, I know it's a little blurry on the screen, but the roadways are out in, out front here. This is a park.
Off of the main road of one thirteen, Black Rock.
Miss Bray, can you take the other mic?
I know, I'm loud enough. I'm just curious if you walked through the actual sketch. Where, where's the actual entrance off of? Where's the main entrance?
For.
The assisted living.
Right here. Off of one of the surrounding roads, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. It's right in here.
Okay. So that is actually, there's a, there's a development right here. Is that correct? Right? And then this is the entranceway? What you're saying?
Yes.
So what are these other buildings all around here?
These are all towns.
They're all what?
Townhouses.
Townhouses. Okay. And these are apartment buildings, correct?
Yes.
And are there? So all in here is all townhouses?
Yes.
Are there, is there nursing here in the assisted living facility? Actually, Mr. Hamlin, it's not, it's not. Okay. So townhouses, townhouses. Actually, you did not go through the whole thing. You pointed out where an assisted living building was. You didn't point out all those single family homes, single family dwelling units with twenty-four hundred square foot minimum. Because, because if I go into one of those, I have to meet criteria, medical criteria for assisted living.
And again, getting back to the heart of it, about what we're talking about, and we're not going to talk about it here.
Mr. Hamlin, I will come to the hearing. And I will bring every Department of Human Services representative that I can to come to that hearing.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that last thing I'm sure was not.
If we have to include our sectorary human services for the, our community services.
Is he important? Anyone been sure you had it on the record?
Okay. Uh, is there anything else from English move?
Uh, we have nothing, but obviously, uh, we understand that the plan is a real common only, uh, conditional use, but we wouldn't like a recommendation on the front of the tentative plan because as you know, even if you recommend a tentative plan and the conditional use is not approved, you don't have any of that.
So, so we're, uh, members, there's, there's two items that are pending. And as everybody who's comes to these know, generally you do one of three things. You either recommend approval, you recommend not being approved, or you choose not to make a recommendation. So it's one of those three. Now, we'll make a recommendation on the tentative sketch first. So let's do, well, tentative sketch, either way. Yeah, let's do tentative sketch. And then the tentative sketch is, um, you know, as we said, that's a very, it's fairly straightforward. Very will comply status on all the review letters. That's my understanding. So, so I'll, I'll, I'll handle a motion to approve the tentative sketch or disprove the tentative sketch. I will hand a motion to that area.
All right.
I have a question first.
Sure.
Mr. Mullin, are any of the representatives of the property, is Dr. Rifkin aware of the previous meeting or this meeting and the date that he helped?
Well, see, he watched the last day of the vote.
Did he give any comments to any of his intentions to attend either the December meeting or this one? And if so, what was his reason to not be here?
At this point, we're proceeding with the plan as you know.
Did he give any comments to why he's not present?
I'm sorry. Did I get here?
Did he give any reason to why he chose not to be present?
No.
I'm here representing the ownership interest.
Okay. Uh, second question. Uh, I have my, my property is on this picture. I have two teenage boys, um, one who's driving. Uh, he drives down Oak State Road every day and he knows about this proposal. And he asked me, what, what is the plan? What is this? My oldest son, unfortunately for him, for fifteen years, he followed me around as a military brat. And now he gets to live in one residence, one school, and hopefully stay in this area for the most, his adult life. Um, he's asking, what, what is the, the plan here? And my question is, has Mr. Rifkin or the LLC or anyone here, are they, are they able to explain to the public what the vision is of this in forty years? What, what, what is the purpose? What, what could you tell the public, myself, when a planning commissioner is considering a plan? And maybe it's a tentative vision, but what is the vision of this?
Basically, what we're proposing. And so I.
I'm not asking your opinion. I'm asking if there is a vision and has it been expressed and can you share it?
Yes. Their vision is to provide immediate housing for people who are aging sixty-two years and up in a situation that does not require them to go into an assisted living facility where they have to pay six hundred thousand dollars and then three thousand dollars a month to they can buy their own home and still get the same benefits. And that's what we're going to propose to do with this entire facility. When it's completed, the people who live here will be well taken care of and be able to age in place. And that's our vision.
And that's sustained beyond twenty, thirty, forty years? If the vision is that that'll be maintained and part of a valuable, positive part of this community?
In that, in fact, uh, as your solicitor would tell you, we will have to present a homeowners declaration for approval by the township. Part of that declaration will say that if for any reason the people who live here do not maintain it, that the township has a right to maintain it and then collect from them the cost for maintenance. So I think it's too much.
Maybe, please, if you could just let Mr. Mullin finish the last comment. I appreciate that.
Well, basically, what we're saying is that there is, there's no fail here. And what's going to happen is the people who live here are going to be able to age in place. Which is very important today. I mean, we have market study, which we presented the conditional use hearing, which shows that there is a demand and a lack of this type housing for people who need it.
Thank you. I would just like to say the last comment for the commission. I know this is a tentative sketch and we've had two meetings for this, but the outcry from the public and the comments made and the questions asked have been nothing short of impressive. But I don't think the applicants have done due diligence, knowing the significance of this project, of this community. What we've seen, at least what I've seen, is a minimalist approach. I've never seen a plan with one graphic brought to this planning commission. And I know I'm a junior member of the planning commission, but the significance of this project, and you brought one graphic that could be barely read. You did not go through all the details at the last meeting. You did not share any additional documents with the planning commission. We had one meeting previous to this. A lot of questions were raised. You've done nothing. No one has made any comments at this meeting to address any of those previous questions. Environmental impacts, historical structure conflicts. Another question was brought up of burial grounds. You made no comments on that. Endangered species.
That's not true, Mr.. When, when that question was raised, they said we are well aware of the burial ground and we will treat that with.
I'm aware of that.
And did.
I, I.
You were here, you heard me say that.
No, I will, I will rephrase that. At no point in your opening statements have you made a comment to show the public that this is in your best interest to take care of the community. It was only in response to the questions. And the additional questions that came up in December, you had no comment on. You had a very short response. You gave us no additional graphics. There's been no responses to those specifics. There was discussion of a hollow in the first meeting. No discussion of that this time. For the commission, I think this is a very amateur approach. I know it's tentative. This isn't, we're, we're not at, in my perspective from the planning commission, there's a lot of additional work that should be handled.
And that's fine. And we need to make a motion and then take a vote on that motion. So, Mr. Gump, if you want to make a motion that this is, whatever your motion is, then we'll vote on that motion.
Could you, could you, um, could you refresh us with our options?
Well. Well, you could either, you could make a motion to recommend approval to the supervisors, recommend that it not be approved, or make a decision to not make a recommendation. To make a no, no approach to it at this point. Somebody has to make a motion on one of those three areas.
I, I would just ask that, does anyone else in the commission have a question? I know that the most important thing is hearing from the public. I believe, are there any other questions or comments? Or do we feel that we need another session?
Not recommending.
No, I, I, I have no other questions. I've heard everybody, you know, taking it all in. And I think we're, you know, we, we understand the issues. We understand there is issues that aren't addressed. We understand there are a lot of circumstances that have yet to be determined, like the hearing that we talked so much about tonight. So there's a lot of issues that have not been found out yet. So again, the motion should be to prove the tentative sketch and then we can move to the preliminary use.
I have, I, like I mentioned, I.
Make a motion.
I have a motion. I, I have heard enough detail. I think that due diligence for this project, so I make a motion and have we make no recommendation on this.
Yes. On the tentative sketch. You make a motion not to approve the tentative sketch.
I make a motion not to make a recommendation to the board supervisor.
So on the tentative sketch. Okay. So I got a motion not to make a recommendation to the tentative sketch to the supervisor. And I have a second for Billy, right?
Yes.
And Billy is seconded, all in favor? Opposed. Hearing that. Okay. So the tentative sketch has been denied. So now.
The vote is to not make a recommendation.
Correct. It was not to make a recommendation.
That's not the, I apologize.
I apologize. I apologize. You know, we all heard what we said, so we all know what we said. All right. So now the vote would be on the conditional use. So now we have to make a recommendation to the supervisors on conditional use.
Same three options.
Same three options. None, something, or, uh, a denial.
Deny.
I make a motion to deny. I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. I make a motion to deny. To deny. Okay. I have a motion to deny the conditional use in a second. Do I have any other comments? All in favor of denial? Now, this is denial of the conditional use. Say aye.
Aye.
The supervisors will, that we deny at this point what we've seen and heard to this point, is that correct? Joe? Your recommendation, yeah, you made a recommendation that they deny the requested conditional use. Right, at this point. And this is not a denial, it's a recommendation that they do that. Yeah, it's a recommendation, I understand, again, we all understand that, and I know that's legal, the legal use, but we all understand what we voted on.
I'm sorry, you made a recommendation, wait a second. Thank you.
So, anything else yet on the agenda?
Yes.
Can I say that ends the portion, this portion of the agenda? And we'll move on to what else is on the agenda, correct, Joe?
Yes.
All right, so we're going to move on to the other point. Would you want to explain that, Joe, what we just voted on? So, so the, the planning commission voted to not make any recommendation either way on the tentative sketch plan, and they made a recommendation that the board of supervisors, when they ultimately vote on the conditional use, they're recommending that they deny the requested relief. So that ends this portion of the meeting. We still have a meeting going on, so I appreciate it if you leave, if you're going to leave, and please do it quietly. Can we continue our meeting? All right, Joe, so next one, I guess, is next.
I'm running the microphone, it's driving down Oak. You already made a recommendation for two cars to be approved, but they changed the plan, not all that specifically, but they changed the plan, not by a stoppage, by a curfew, to either further recommendations or further funding. We need to turn around the area, we need to move the road improvement there, and you're creating what you didn't do before. So that's still on the agenda. There's still some open questions tonight, if we can get through it at that meeting. That's the only thing we have listed for that agenda.
What'd you say, they've been so good.
What they have moving around, in fact, it was scheduled for January 4th, and then they moved to this date, so. Actually, I think it's pretty, so. The next would be February 15th, we don't have Park House, I put this tendency on there. Well, we're down since now we don't have Park House. But one city will have the real townhouse, that's the development atop the hill by Galloway. Their preliminary plan is ready, well, let me put it where it is. They have preliminary plan, we had a meeting last week, the sketch on for a couple hours. We went through some of the engineering issues, we worked through some engineering issues, and they're going to resubmit some plans, and we're going to have a re-review in time for this meeting. So what they'll do is they'll take Gilmore's legislative page letter and hopefully reduce it down quite a bit. We'll see, but, and I'm not beating up on Gilmore.
No, that's not really-
I'm not beating up on Dave Weyman's strike, because that's just the way these letters work sometimes. But the idea is that we want to bring people in with a letter that's not voluminous.
Yes, and we all want that.
Yes, right.
We all want that.
It can't be perfectly, you understand that, but that's, the goal is to get it-
Shorter, right.
Also on that meeting, I think I was asked today to put the final plan, there's Valleyford Baptist is putting an addition on to back of the building.
Yes.
I think I even done that ever already?
Well, they did put this.
Yeah, well, they already put one on, now we're putting another one on. So that's an amendment, final plan, that will be on this agenda, I think everybody reviewing it right now.
What, the June 15th?
On the 15th, yes. And then March, I don't, I don't know. We're that far out, we'll just have to stay. Then the environmental advisory council meeting, we had a meeting tonight. Our next meeting for that will be the 15th at 6 o'clock, and we'll determine what's on that agenda. I mean, we have some ideas that we talked about, but we'll firm that enough and be closer.
Okay, so any other comments tonight? Comments or questions, or you had fun tonight, so you can't stand it? So if not, I'll take a motion to, here.
I'll take it.
I got a motion, Bob, second?
I got a second.
Billy's got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any other?